Welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for December 18th, 2019. First item is to salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free to be, and held to its will.
Actually, we might want to move that up. Move that up because...
Yeah. No matter.
This was advertised, I think, for 6:30.
6:30.
For 6:30.
Yep.
We're gonna have to use up some time.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Town Administrative Weekly Update. Where we are next.
Okay. So I've had some early conversations with the school in regards to their budget timeline. They've kind of put something together in regards to the school budget vote. I did get a copy over to Warren and Finance, so they had it for their meeting on Monday. It looks like tentatively we have set the school budget hearing vote for Monday, April 6th at 7:00 PM. Once this is finalized, so that'll be the actual school budget vote at the school. So everything kind of works backwards from then. We've got the March 24th listed as the date that the budget is due, so that you guys can sign the warrant, we can get it posted in time.
So what's the date again?
April 6th.
Yes.
It is draft. She had someone else that she wanted to have look over it, but I just wanted to let you know that they did call and check with the date for this, to make sure. So we have been advertising an assistant position. Michelle and I have reviewed the very few resumes that we've gotten, and we have, we'd certainly like you to take a look at them, but we would like to repost it after the holidays.
Okay. Kind of thought that would happen anyway, I think when we talked about posting it, so...
I have scheduled with you guys a couple of workshops in January, just at 5:00, hoping that you could spend a half hour each with two different gentlemen that are in the running to review our website. They both have a lot of good qualities and a lot to offer, similar financial, you know, similar financially what it's gonna cost the town, and it is something that we budgeted for. But I just, you know, thought that you guys could sit down with both of them and just see the program and the website and kind of help us make that final decision, so. Friday I met with Protection One. You'll find something under the camera system, under New Business. Couple of things that we went over. First of all was the pull stations. We were recently reminded that there are no pull stations anywhere in the building should there be a fire. On the alarm pads, there are fire or rescue buttons, but they're not activated. So the first question the fire chief was, if we activate those buttons, will it be enough? A lot of people don't like them activated, because if you walk by and just push them, it's a silent alarm. We talked about getting prices per pull station and putting them in, you know, we're not gonna be able to afford to do all of them by every single exit. But, you know, there are some areas, especially if you look at the code enforcement room downstairs that sometimes people use, there's no, you know what I mean, they can't get to the alarm pad, so, because if the scouts were using that and that middle door is locked, even if they were, they wouldn't be able to push those buttons. So there are certain places that we should have pull stations, so they're working on a price for that. The other thing that they are proposing is, it's a three-way camera system. And essentially, so if you're standing at the counter, if you're standing at either one of the windows waiting on customers, there would be three cameras pointing in three different directions. One is gonna point directly down the walkway, one's gonna point in this whole hallway, and then one would point right at the windows themselves. They do record, they record over themselves after seven days, there's no volume on them. And the package that he put together includes two monitors. The idea is that one monitor would be in the clerk's office, so that, you know, you can see down the hallway and in those areas, and then we'd put the other monitor either in the treasurer's office or in the back, probably the treasurer's office, so that...
That'd be more occupied.
Right, when people are, so when someone's alone at the office and you can hear something going on, you know, at least she can see the camera and she can see kind of what's going on. So we went through a bunch of different proposals, and I'll give you the prices and the contract under New Business. Looking at the remainder of the December calendar, so obviously next Wednesday is Christmas, the following Wednesday is New Year's Day, so the town hall has closed both of those days. We still do have warrants and bills that need to be signed, so certainly we'll be looking for you guys on Monday or Tuesday, but I guess asking more about the meeting schedule. Do we want to try to not meet those two weeks and see what happens?
What do we have lined up? I mean...
We can't, we can't meet that one Wednesday, so we'd have to change the date.
Right, well it'd have to be a different day.
Be both of them, yeah. Yeah, with that, this would be the last meeting for the year.
This would be the last, this would be the last meeting until January 8th.
Right.
Right.
Which puts in another week out, so. We might need, probably we could skip next week, we may need one the following week.
That'd be New Year's, right?
Yeah, but you could do Monday.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Ah, I can't do Mondays. I'm, I coach a basketball team on Monday.
Okay.
So you want to just kind of get through the holidays? I mean, we can always post and advertise it.
Yeah, I guess we just see if we need to do an emergency one, we can do that.
Okay. As long as you guys come in and sign the bills and stuff, I mean, it's, you know, it's not a whole lot going on in your office that we can't, you know, can't sort through, so...
Yep.
So May Municipal follow-up, as far as, so he came and we went over the concerns that he had from the fire station. We went through each one of them step by step. There was only one that wasn't completed that he, he, this is a different underwriter from the original guy, but he told us to no longer worry about it. It's some sort of, there's a vessel or something that has to be inspected, something with the vessel pressure.
Air compressor?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it was, but...
There was an issue with the air, well, not an issue, but the new air compressor they bought over there, the last inspector wanted it inspected and the tag on it.
Okay.
But...
Yeah, and apparently there's only one person in the state that does it. And we had a documentation, we had documentation from the prior fire chief showing that he was waiting for the guy to come out, so I showed him that and said, you know, "We're trying," and he basically said that, yeah, that not to worry about it anymore.
Yeah.
So that took care of that.
Good.
As far as the transfer station, he was very pleased with everything that you guys had done up there. There are some policies that he wants into place, that he's emailing over samples, that I'll be start working with Bob on, similar to some of the trainings that he has, like the lockout, tagout, and the hazardous waste. There's not policies on how to handle those things, so he kind of gave us a little note on that.
They took all those classes too, didn't they?
They took all the classes, yeah, and I showed him all that, yep.
They just have them policies in place.
Yep, so, and then we'll save the gym for the gym.
Yep.
Just said, I got a call and I just wanted to, in case you got a call, that, so something happened with a windstorm to one of the doors on the Mary Grant.
Right.
Reserve, we saw that. The chair is aware of it and he's handling it, said he was gonna go over and take care of it. I didn't hear back from him, so I have to assume that he was all set. Mentioned last week some loose ends from the wreck. Did get all the receipts from the individual that had the pity cash, so that piece is done. As far as the electrician, we're not 100% sure that we know which electrician it is, but who we believed was the electrician they were gonna be using. Michelle went down to code enforcement and got a copy of his electrical card and got some basic information. We still don't have a volunteer form, so hopefully he's not working. They've also had us order some, a new liner for ice rinks, you should see that, check request, Bluetooth speaker for music, I guess, that I'm gonna play. And then, instead of the hay bales this year, they were doing a type of a noodle, I call it a noodle, they were foam noodle, similar like foam noodles that go around the edge, supposed to help bounce off, so you'll see that...
Those I could keep reusing, right?
I would, I would think so, but...
It'd be a lot better off, yeah.
So...
Yep.
Reminder that staff Christmas party is tomorrow at 1:00. And on that note of Christmas, just wanted to shout out to everybody that helped with the neighbors helping neighbors. This year we adopted eight different kids, all this year were all two- and three-year-olds, except for one eight-year-old, so they were all little, little this year. And so we collected a total of 96 gifts for them. They, everybody gets the same amount of pajamas and clothes and shoes and slippers and toys, so that was that. So those all got wrapped and we'll be distributing those soon. And then we also adopted five elderly individuals that we know live alone in town, other than maybe a furry friend, so we've got some goodies for them as well.
Nice.
Awesome.
Good.
That's all I have short of the fitness center.
Okay, we'll talk about that when we get down to it, so. Okay, thank you. Warrants, bills, I've signed them.
I gotta finish them up.
You need to sign them, you can do them now, you can do them afterwards, either way.
I'll do them afterwards, so we can roll in.
Okay. Okay, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for December 18th.
But you want to move...
Oh, I wanna switch New Business, swap A and G.
Yep. Well, this is, yeah...
You're swapping A and G?
Or you just want to put G in front of A?
Just put G in front of A, yeah. Yep, gonna move that to the top, just so, okay. Okay, moving now, I'll second it, with the exception of moving G up to A, it's the only Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed, okay. Minutes of the last meeting?
So we actually have two weeks that need to be approved, but because of Kim not being here and you not being here last week, we gotta table both of those.
Okay, Department Heads Committee Chair Updates. Do we have any tonight? Going once, going twice?
You wanna drag this out while I can talk?
That's quite all right, Dennis. I'll give you, I'll give you another opportunity down under public comment.
At the time.
Okay, well, it's okay. Okay, Old Business, Policies to Sign.
So last week I gave out the drug policy. David, we had some concerns with it, so we're gonna table that until after the holidays, and I need you to review it, 'cause that's a very important one.
Okay.
Also on January 8th, I've scheduled code enforcement and transfer station to come in and talk to you about the pending demolition debris permit.
Yes.
That's one I need to get to the bottom of.
Okay.
And the rest, then we'll start fresh after that.
Okay, so we're all set there. Okay, Goat Hill?
I talked to Carl Davis today. They opened the bids last week, right?
Right.
Oh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yep, so he opened the bid two weeks ago. He definitely is interested in the low bidder. We have been communicating with Doug Beck from the state and are looking to get more information from the low bidder, so he's asked that you table that.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I also asked them to see if you could get more detailed exactly what the bid is gonna consist of.
Right, right. Okay. Collections Contract.
So the fire chief and treasurer and myself reviewed the contracts that came across as far as four collections for fire rescue calls. I think, as I mentioned, there's really very little difference between the two. One had a little bit better of a collection ratio, a little better turnaround. The billing company that we've switched to also has, had a little bit of a recommendation of one over the other. So with that said, we took that contract and sent it over to Burke and Clegg to review before you sign it.
Sounds good. Okay, let's hear of Old Business. So New Business, we did move, for anybody that did come in a few minutes ago, we did move the executive session up to A, before A, so...
Everything's back now.
Yep, so do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session, MRSA 405-6-A.
Okay, moving now, I'll second it. All favor, opposed? Okay, we will be right back.
Do I make a motion to come out of meeting first, right?
Yep.
What time is it?
Okay, do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion to come out of executive session, MRSA 405-6A at 6:31.
Okay, I'll second it. All favor, opposed, okay.
Make the motion.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to increase the office assistant to $15 an hour effective immediately.
Okay, I'll second that. Increase the office assistant's pay? Any further discussion? Nope, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
I make a motion to take, take any planning board appointments until the full board is fully present.
Okay, yeah, we don't really need a motion on that one, but that's, we're just gonna be table on that.
Deal it.
Yeah. Okay, okay, Camera System.
Okay, so as we mentioned in the update, we are looking at $3,546 is the installation price, that's for three cameras, the recording system, the monitors that would be in both offices, and you're looking at a monthly reoccurring fee of $21.29. I did speak to the treasurer, she said that that could come out of building maintenance. The general government line is going to have quite a bit of flexibility with the prior deputy town clerk leaving the health insurance line, but in any event, the building maintenance line still has several thousand dollars on it, so...
System was how much?
There's a list of everything that's on there.
Yes, $21 a month.
$21 a month thereafter.
You're getting three cameras?
Three cameras, one for down the walkway, one for the whole hallway, and one for in front of the windows.
Is this expandable for more cameras?
I mean, I'm sure you could add them at any time.
No, this isn't wireless, this is gonna be wired up direct online.
Right, they're gonna be wired.
Yeah.
And you, obviously you can adjust them to where, you know, to the direction, but based on the situations and the events that have happened, those were the three general areas that I recommend.
Yep, that sounds like a good idea to me, I mean, we need the security.
Yeah, we've, we've had a couple issues up here in the past, and I think we have to address these issues. You know, you see all this stuff on TV, and I don't want to be that guy that says, you know, "Yeah, we'll just push it aside and if something happened..."
We should've, yeah.
"...at least this here, you know, with some, a couple of the individuals, that's been an issue." This might, might help out the situation, so...
Yep, okay. You need a motion on it, is you get the money in your account to buy in the budget?
Ah, it's gonna come out of building maintenance, so you do need a motion to approve it, and I need a signature on it.
Good.
Okay, make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the new cameras for the lobby, office, and walkway.
Dollar amount?
For $3,546 and $21.29 a month.
Okay, moving now, I'll second it, move to second it, to purchase the camera system for security. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Just initial this, or...
Please.
For those that have come in since we went into executive session, it came out, a couple more items, we'll be down to talk about the gym, 'cause I assume that's what 99% of you are here for, so...
Well, that crowd grew, suddenly come back, huh?
It did. Okay, CEO Copier.
So, still having trouble with the copier downstairs, I'm trying to get us out of the lease. The last email that I just got at quarter of four essentially is, they're offering, so code enforcement is happy with the machine that's upstairs, but the problem is that we signed the lease with one downstairs. Certain amount of time went by, they're talking about, you know, possibly getting us out of it with some restocking fees, because in all fairness, the copier company feels like it can do what it's supposed to do, it just doesn't do it the way that's probably most convenient for, for the people involved. And rightfully so on the staff's, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a middle ground, but...
Yep.
So they're paying, you know, about $60 a month for the lease for where they're at. The copier that they want is $138, so it's doubled, so we have to look at it as, okay, well, we've only got six months left of the fiscal year, so again, can our general government, municipal, can that, can that afford that increase? And again, because between the workers' comp and the health insurance savings, we know that it can, you know, it can save the 60 times, what, six, $240 we're talking about of an increase, so... But I just want to double-check with, with Michelle and a couple more numbers, so we'll just table that until next week.
So how long, did we sign that lease for? I can't remember.
It's been about two months.
And we had signed it two months ago, but how long is it for?
It's a five-year lease.
Five-year lease, okay. And so they're telling you right now that they don't want, without charging us, restocking to go up to upgrade to a...
Well, I mean, it was, it was an upgrade, you know, it was the next step up.
But we want to upgrade from this upgrade, right?
We're not happy with the copier the way that it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not, I don't think that they necessarily want an upgrade, they've been using the other one, you know, they now use our, ours, so they're comfortable with it.
Well, it's gotta be an upgrade if we're going from $60 a month.
Well, it's definitely an upgrade, I would say definitely an upgrade, but the office isn't really asking for that, I guess that's what I'm saying. They were happy with their tiny, small one, but it doesn't do what they want it to do at the level they need it to do.
Well, just my concern is, is, you know, obviously, they said that it could do something that they don't seem to be happy with, but we're at $60 a month right now, and we're not happy with it, well, they're not happy with it, and we want to upgrade it almost double the, well, it's gonna be over double the cost. Usually companies jump at the idea of, you know...
Right, but we just signed, they would've jumped at it if we were at the end of the lease.
Yeah.
We just signed a five, a five-year lease, so it says, "We've talked to the lease company and looks, trying to look over the numbers. Obviously we're losing money unless we can resell the 287." They just brought that one in.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have to find something to do with that one, you know what I mean, that we just signed on.
Yeah.
So it'd be different, I think, we're at the end of the lease, you're right, they would be jumping on it, creeping it.
So they may, they may be able to find another buyer here at some point, and we might be able to get out of it, is that what they're saying?
Yes, but, but in any event, the 138 is probably what we paid for the upstairs one, but remember the upstairs one does twice as much volume, it's got the stapler, the holebuncher, you know what I mean? It does everything for the rest of the town, so we're trying to get some of those finished things off that they want, so I'm trying to work on the price. But at the end of the day, it's really, the copier will do it, but it's not doing it easily. So they're not feeling like it's completely their responsibility, the copier company, so...
Okay.
We'll sort it out.
Yeah.
But it's gonna cost you a lot more money.
Okay. Okay, this is from Carol K. She says, "It's with a deep regret that I inform you that Friday, December 20th, will be my last day serving on the rec committee, potentially moving to Florida at the end of January." And even if she wasn't, she's got other things going on that she can no longer serve on the board, so... Sounds good. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Well, yeah.
We call her Carol K.
Carol K.
Let's just call her Carol K, okay, I'll make it easier.
And she signed it, Carol K.
She does?
Yes.
She's grown to accept it.
Yeah, Carol K...
I make a motion, we accept the resignation from Carol K.
Yes, I was gonna try to pronounce it, but...
Recreating.
Yeah, we all know Carol K. from the rec committee.
Yeah.
I'll second it with a regret, so, all in favor, all opposed? That's too bad.
Yep.
There's a definite asset, but you can't do it from Florida, so... The gym, now, typically, typically in our Selectman's Meetings, we don't take public comment until we get down to the public comment section. We do know this is a very hot topic with the gym, so in this particular instance, we will take comment, but we, we're gonna give you our stance on it first. 99.9% of our stance is driven by our insurance company. Typically, if you can throw money at a problem, it's not a problem. This one, I don't know if it's, it's not all money, unfortunately. So, with that said, we will take comment. Jennifer's gonna give the information first, as far as what we have from the insurance company and whatnot, and where we sit.
Did I give you guys one?
Should we pass those off first?
I did, I did.
Yeah, she just did.
Okay.
We do have some rules that we follow, even on the public comment section, and we will on this. There's a three limit, time, a three-minute time limit for comments. Once everybody has said their piece, and if someone wants to get up a second time, we may, may introduce that for a second time, but that's where we sit. And with that, do you have a spare copy of that?
Yes.
If anybody did get a copy, thank you.
So I like to start these presentations, if you will, similar to budget presentations, and remind you all that my job is to present the information. It doesn't mean that I am for the gym closing or against the gym closing. My job is to look out in the best interest of the town and tell you what your insurance company said. I have no direct interest in this gym, so please don't start throwing daggets as I go over all the concerns that the insurance company has, 'cause these are not my concerns. So with that said, I'm gonna start by telling you that we have 28 paid memberships at the gym, 28. We have six families that are paid through June 30th of 2020. We have 20 members that are expiring December 31st of 19. We have two people that we waive memberships for, that's 28, and then we have 17 additional people that are allowed to use the gym under family memberships. So you have a total of 42 people using the gym, and you have approximately 2,100 registered voters, okay? So 42 people. All right, I'm not gonna go down and read through all of these, I'm not gonna read these to you, I'm gonna walk you through some history and remind the board. So we pay memberships to, memberships to a company called May Municipal. May Municipal is our insurance company. They cover all of our property and casualty insurance, they cover it the same at the school. They cover our workers' comp, they cover every type of insurance that the town has. With that said, once every, one to three years, they schedule appointments and they go around and they start inspecting buildings. And if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, you heard the recap of their follow-up of their inspection at the transfer station and at the fire station. They came out several months ago, they create what they call an action plan of all of their concerns, and then they come back a few months later to say, "Have you done these things?" And if you don't, here are the ramifications. The gym has, for lack of better words, slipped through the cracks. May Municipal has been out after several different boards now for probably three to five years, okay? And I say this with utmost respect to my board, past and present, but they have been told of these concerns and have been told they need to address them, and now unfortunately we're at a point where the insurance company's gonna step in because we're not addressing them. So this isn't all financial. It is possible, based on the current numbers and the warm temperatures, that we could keep it open another, you know, another few months. I've got some numbers that I'll run through as far as the balances and where we're at, what we expect the electricity and the heat to be, but the bigger piece now is really the liability that the insurance company has. They're all listed out here, but what they want to see, what they ideally would like to see is the town not be in the fitness center business, that we're, you know, as a municipality, we shouldn't be in that business. It's a huge liability. They want to see it staffed 24/7, if it's gonna be open 24/7, because, you know, unfortunately, for example, when I went over last week with the insurance inspector, there was an individual in there, you know, just like I would if I was working out, because I don't do that, he was, you know, he was, he was working hard on that treadmill, and it was clear, and if something would've happened to him, I mean, he was in there alone, there's no cameras, and nobody watching him, it's a liability. They had, he had concerns about nobody being in there and being able to use it 24/7. So they'd like it staffed, that's their big thing, they want it staffed 24/7. They want orientation. They want to know that every time somebody, somebody signs up, that somebody is going to take that new person and teach them how to use every piece of equipment, okay? The liability forms we have, you sign those if you're signed up, the keys. They say do not duplicate on them, but I can tell you that I've had more than one call Um, they say do not duplicate on them, but I can tell you that I've had more than one call from a, um, hardware company, hardware store, telling me that people are trying to duplicate my do not duplicate keys. So what happens when you duplicate those keys and you give them to, to your friend, the friend's going in there and working out and has no waiver. And we're not worried about losing a little bit of money, I'm, you know, my piece is the liability. So when that friend goes in with that key that he should have never gotten copied, because some stores just, their employees may not have the same ethics to not copy a do not copy key, he goes in and works out, and he gets hurt, we don't even have a liability. So the keys is an issue, they'd like to see an alarm code, which we've done in the past, but it'd be no different than Ed giving David his alarm code. Uh, they wanna see checks and balances, and, um, our, one of our previous boards kinda started this. Um, they wanna see, you know, randomly, somebody going over different times of the day and different days of the week, and saying, okay, I'm sorry, what's your name, sir, are you on my list, let me see your liability. And if, you know, they wanna see the form, because they wanna make sure that nobody in there is working out that the town doesn't have a li, a liability form on file for, okay? Um, there are some concerns with the, um, the building itself, as far as the entrance in and the, the door inside of the exit, the steps, the gaps to get out. Uh, they wanna see pushbars on them for emergency, um, what do you call those, the fire bars? Uh, they wanna see egress, thank you. They, they have huge concerns with the free weight bars, because they say that going, if you, that across the, across the country, that those free weight bars are causing more accidents, especially if you're working out alone and the bar slips. Um, you know, they're talking about, um, there's a couple of pieces of equipment over there that are out of order. They wanna know what our process is, you know, what's your plan when something's out of order, how does a gym member report it? What are the, what are the steps that we're taking? You know, you'll see things on there about disinfecting the equipment, warning labels, um, the floor mats, trip fall hazards, AEDs. A gym, I mean, you think about an actual fitness center and Planet Fitness and everything that they have to put together to run a gym and be safe for all of the, everybody using it, that's what they wanna see in the town of Acton if we're gonna continue to be in that. A few people have asked, and this is the last thing that I'll say, is, is why this year is it coming up and in other years? And I think that it's important for, for anybody here to understand the difference. So the gym usually is between four and six thousand dollars, that's about what it costs, depending on, on the year. It comes close to funding itself, uh, we'd have to pull the last few years to double check for, but we almost get enough revenues in the past to cover the expenses. This last year during budget season, uh, conversations happened between the selectmen and the warrant and finance committees to talk about why should we be raising tax dollar money to fund something that people are paying in addition? I mean, if you're gonna use taxpayer money on, to pay the town clerk, then everybody should be able to utilize the town clerk for no additional cost. So the idea from the warrant and finance committee was that, great, if people wanna use the gym, that's good, but they should have to pay for it, and the rest of the taxpayers shouldn't have to. So after deliberations, the warrant and finance committee made a recommendation to not fund the gym, to put a zero, a number zero in that budget line. We got to town meeting in June, it went back and forth, conversations were had about it, and eventually the voters of the town of Acton approved it with the warrant and finance recommendation with that zero number. So, we just, uh, so when our fiscal year started in July, we started taking renewals. In September, October, our auditor came in, and the auditor is saying, okay, Jennifer, Michelle, you're keeping a close eye on this, right? You have no tax dollar money that you can spend on that gym based on town vote. So now we're watching it very carefully, so it's, it's weighing, it's the money piece, it's the building piece. And that's essentially where we're at now. Pretty good roundup?
Sounds good to me.
You covered most of the bases.
So, that's, that's where it's at, um, and that's what the insurance company, they, you know, I, they want an update on what we're doing to keep it safe.
Yeah, I mean, as a town building, if it wasn't a gym, we'd have to utilize it for something else, or, or shut it, shut the heat down and drain the water and whatnot. But as a gym, as it sits today, the town voters did vote not to put any money into it, so it's whatever money it comes in.
So this board can't, even if they wanted to.
Right, but we, yeah, we couldn't even vote money into it.
Even if you all stand up and encourage them to, they don't have the authority, they can't trump town meeting vote. The most they could do is have a special town meeting and ask the voters again to appropriate the money. That's, that's their only option.
But once again, that doesn't answer the liability side of it.
Not unless the money goes to fix the liability side.
Right, which would be to probably hire someone to be there. I'm not gonna say twenty-four seven, 'cause if we're gonna hire someone.
You'd have to change the outcome.
We would lose the twenty-four seven access, you'd have, you know, you'd have set hours. Um, you know, whatever it would end up being.
Which I think the reason why a lot of people like using gyms, they can go in anytime they.
Right, I mean, yeah, that was a big plus. Um, I've been on this board eight years now, and, yeah, we've been seeing the reports from the insurance company and basically chose to just kinda be quiet about it. Kinda like what we did with the salt shed, if you remember back quite a few years ago. Uh, we had a salt shed that had an issue, we finally had to bite the bullet on the salt shed and spend half a million dollars and build a new one and tear the old one down. Um, the insurance company finally said, look it, this is it, you're done, you know?
And that's the thing, the insurance company.
Which I don't like.
Will only allow you to do this for so long, and what's gonna happen at the end of the day is they'll just, they'll, they'll issue the town of Acton, not the board of selectmen, they'll issue the town of Acton a statement saying that if anything happens, it will not be covered, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So if, if after these conversations, the board decides that, listen, we can do, you know, seventy-five percent of these things, and we turn it back over to May Municipal, and we say, are these seventy-five percent of the things good enough?
Yeah.
Or do we have to be at a hundred percent, will you meet us in the middle? Because it's an insurance company, they're gonna give us, they're gonna want us to do absolutely everything. There may be a little bit of wiggle room there, um, but some things there aren't.
Very little.
You know, the supervised.
That's the biggest thing.
That's a big.
Because they don't want anybody in there alone.
Obviously, we can't fund that right now if we wanted to.
Right.
That's something we're gonna have to bring to town meeting. Um, you know, I mean, honestly, to do this, we're gonna, you know, if the, the people, which looks like a lot of people here, uh, wanna do this, it's gonna be some sort of plan. Some budget numbers, and something that we could put forward towards town meeting, you know, if they wanna continue doing this. But at this rate, at this point right now, I think, uh, we have no choice right now but, you know, to, um, cease. For, at least for the meantime, till we can get all this figured out, and just make sure that, you know, we can still stay covered through the insurance.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they'll, I don't think they'll pull the insurance on the building side of it, the structure, but they'll pull the insurance on the liability side, which means if anybody gets hurt, if anything happens that way, uh, that's what they did on the salt shed, they actually pulled the, they pulled the, they pulled both the liability and they pulled the building off the coverage on the salt shed.
They gave us a deadline.
Yeah, it had to be done by.
And they haven't, I mean, just for clear, they haven't given us that deadline yet, but they're, they're on the, on the heels.
It's, it's, it's more than on the radar, I mean, it's on.
The problem we have now is, we have a list of things that we have to do, and if something happens, now, we, we're aware of it.
Right.
So that, that makes us liable.
Yeah, so, like I said, if it was just a simple matter of throwing money at it, um, you know, that's, and, yeah, in a way it is that, but it's.
Well, you could throw money at me.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of money, 'cause you're gonna have to hire someone.
And that's why, you know, if, 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 if people wanna get together, I don't know how, how we go about, I mean, obviously, the, the finance committee wasn't a big fan of it, they cut the budget, so I don't think that would be a committee that would be favorable to send this to and say, you know, whatever. Of course, I don't think it's their duty anyways, but, uh, you know, you'd almost have to have a committee to do this, 'cause, you know, you've got a lot of homework here to do, I mean, you've got all this stuff that has to be priced out, how much it's gonna cost.
Right.
Um, and then figure out, you know, how much it's gonna cost to have supervised, um, you know, a supervisor there, you know, to cover that aspect of it, and, um, the feasibility of it, you know, we've, we've got forty-two people right now using it. So, um, so, I mean, you know, if you.
And we did, I mean, we, and we raised the prices some already.
Yeah, trying to offset.
And that was one of the, when we raised the prices, we probably only got about fifty percent of last year's.
Right.
I mean, one, one concern that I saw with the, uh, the way that, the way it was done, you know, you have the year round, you had to get the seasonal, um, and it was more people doing the, like, the half-year one.
Well, right, so the board gives them the option, well, yeah, the board gives them the option to either sign up quarterly, half a year, or for the full year.
Well, I mean, the problem is, is, we run on a fiscal year budget.
Right.
And so if you give somebody an option to do a quarter of the year.
Well, we didn't know at that time, the townspeople weren't going to approve the budget.
But that's the problem we're having is, okay, seeing that they didn't approve it, now we have to look at, okay, say this, we can keep this rolling, we have to, we have to solve this issue, because if, if you, if you're running a whole fiscal year, you have to know how much you're gonna be able to spend.
And if all of those, in, in that defense.
You don't have this problem every, every November, December, or whatever, so.
If all of the people that expire at the end of December renew, money-wise, you're gonna be fine. It's hearing what some of the thoughts are on getting past the other piece of it, you know what I mean? Assuming all those people reapply.
But what I'm saying is, I mean, you got the, the six.
Should've done it for the year.
Full, yeah, because if you do it for the year, at least it assures us that we know that's guaranteed.
With X amount of money.
You know, we can, we can keep this thing running, but by doing it by quarter like that, it's giving you a tease. Uh, here's a little bit, you might be, make, you might make it, you might make it. So you almost have to put your foot down and say, hey, it's either you're in or you're out. Because, you know, we got that fiscal year, we have to build a budget for it, if we can't, if the finance committee does, say we go and, okay, we're gonna put some more money at it, and then the finance committee did the same thing they did last year, and say, nope, boom, and they amend the article at town meeting, then we're screwed again. So, we'll be in the same boat we are now. Um, so, um, there's a lot, a lot of stuff here we gotta pick at, and I, I don't wanna see the gym shut down no more than anybody else does.
No, I don't either.
But the problem we're having here is, we're trying to make this all work with the list that we have from the insurance company, with the lack of membership we're having, with paying quarterly, the lack of knowing what your budget numbers are at certain points of the year, it's, it's an unknown, without, especially without having the town money behind it, saying, okay, well, if we don't get this many, at least we have this money to assure that we can heat the place. And, and, and we can fix a little odds and ends in there, 'cause right now, you know, the light bulbs blow out, I mean, do we have money to fix that? If there's a wiring issue, do we have money to fix, we have nothing.
You can't legally spend money on it.
So, I, and, and the problem is, is, if some, if we have an issue right now on the building, say, um, we have an electrical issue, we have to call Norman to come in and, and fix it, we can't do that. If we do that, we're gonna spend money, and then to say we can't heat it, the next thing you know, we can't reimburse everybody that paid, so.
Well, and that, okay, that's gotta be subtracted first.
That's what you're watching close, so.
I think that there's some ideas.
When did it actually become a gym for public? I know back in two thousand and three, it actually started with two thousand and three, the fire department got a grant for fitness equipment. And then it moved from the fire station over here.
I started in oh-six, and I feel like it was already there.
Really?
I mean, I feel like it was, no, I don't know, or maybe I wasn't paying attention in oh-six.
Okay, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's been a good long time, so.
When was it, Ann?
It was about two thousand and five or six.
So it could've been.
Uh, 'cause it started with town employees, excuse me, it started.
Yeah.
It's first, it started out with town employees, uh, were eligible, and not just the fire department. And then it expanded to, uh, then there was different rates.
Committees and stuff, right, committees and.
Yep.
If, if I could, um, we went through this about ten years ago. It was just about ten years ago, wasn't it, Gil? We shut down the gym, uh, for some of the same reasons, it was the insurance company, and there was some, um, health hazards that were over there. And Gil Bovare spearheaded a, a group of people, uh, working code enforcement, and, and resolved the issues, it took two or three months. It wasn't as extent that this is today, but everything changes in time anyway. And, and I just wanna be very clear, uh, 'cause I am one of the members on the warrant finance committee that had this concern, and a lot of these things were my concern, but I just wanna be very clear, that all the warrant finance committee did in reality is expose how things were operating. And the townspeople, uh, are the ones that decided that we weren't gonna fund it, uh, they should be self-reliant. And that was just an option given to the to, town meeting, and that's what they decided to do. Uh, it doesn't like the finance committee, they made some big fight.
Certainly wasn't, wasn't saying that, I mean, I, you know, in the conversations with, I've had with Peter, and he.
No, I appreciate that, Jen, you didn't.
On your war, there's two recommendations, and the voters there, people did not speak up and be, um, in favor of the gym at town meeting, I mean, it just didn't happen, so.
There wasn't any conversation. But anyway, I, I just want you to know, at least myself, I'm not against this gym. Uh, it's just, this health issue's out there, even, it's not even covered in this. You know, there's, there's no, uh, air circulation, the place is full of mold. Uh, at least a septic vent isn't inside the building like it was when you came to fix it, Gil.
The what?
The vent for the septic system.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did mention the mold around the window, but I wasn't gonna bring that up.
It was inside the building and.
I only did everything outside, I didn't do anything by inside.
Yeah, I, I actually, that was one thing I saw, I actually put it outside.
Are you taking public?
Yeah, I'll take public comment now, so.
Ideas, thoughts?
Yeah, anyone from the public wanna come up and speak, this is your time to come up and, and tell us on this. We won't take anything to do with the gym under, under the actual public comment section, this is the time for, for the gym.
Well, we, I, I might sell a like, I mean, there's a lot of people here, I know there's a lot of people that, I got a very good friend of mine who loves that place, and, you know, we're stuck in a kind of a bind here, but I'd like to have some sort of ideas.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to get the pulse of the, of the people.
Is there a way through volunteers that you can get some, I mean, some of these things aren't real financial, they're not expensive, are there ways through volunteers?
Yeah, you look like you're itching to get up here and take, take this right on, so.
All right, here I go again, it's been fifteen years.
Just state, just state your name if you would, for the record, we know who you are.
Gil Bovare, back again. Yeah, there is quite a few people who love that gym, and I know it's got its little quirks and problems, um, but it is a little gift that we have. I was reading through the list, and quite a few of these, if, I think if we had a small group of people that would be willing to, um, group together and go over this list, some of these things are just, you can tell that the insurance person was just, do we have this?
Right.
Not sure, do we have this, here's an example, um, uh, let's see, who is responsible for cleaning and overall maintenance of the building? Um, that's, would be kind of a little bit of a mix, I would imagine. Uh, let's see.
Got this one right here, this one gets me, are there emergency medical services available within five to ten minutes right next to the fire station?
There is, correct, we got that, ding, check that up. I mean, it's a, quite, I just thought, like, I know that we had, we were shut down for quite a while, and, and the fire department, I didn't wanna get all the credit for that, Dennis, 'cause it was a lot of the fire department that came, and they did all the work. I mean, we painted, and we did all kinds of stuff, but the trip hazards, you know, everything that the code enforcement officer listed that we had to fix, we fixed it, and it took months, but, um, so some of these things are kind of repeating what, uh, had been closed from before. So I, I do not believe there's trip slip fall hazards, maybe at that doorway entrance, there's something that has to be fixed there.
Yeah, there used to, I was surprised, 'cause there used to be a step over there, wasn't there a step?
There is, it's leaning up against the wall outside the building.
Typically gets moved in the winter, after snowplowing.
Of course, I walked over with them, it was gone.
Um, and we used to have, yeah, and, I, I mean, there could be ways to, to do this, there's lots of different ideas I have, and one could be, um, I mean, we've signed a li, one of the things in here was, did everybody sign a liability? Yeah, we all have to sign a liability, and, and releasing the town of, and I get, you can, there's things you can do to get around that, but it's pretty hard to, um, find negligence if you've already signed a liability waiver. I was talking to Jen about, if you're at a hor, in a horse barn, they have huge signs all over the place, says that, and we have it right in the gym that says, this, this equipment is dangerous, this equipment can hurt you. You are, need to know how to use it before you use it, there's clear signs on every piece of equipment, how to use it, or at least how not to use it, and how that it's inherently dangerous to use it. So there's quite a bit of these things that we could just go tick, 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 all done. And then if we could get together to come up with some brainstorm ideas where there's a rule that we have to sign, or I don't know how you could prove it, but that you would have a buddy, buddy system, and you, if you were, you know, aged, maybe, I don't know, I mean.
Even, I mean, you could ask the insurance company, listen, we can't, we can't staff at twenty-four seven, but we always have two people present. I mean, there, like I said, there may be some wiggle room, but.
Yeah, if they, if they could, if there could be some way we could talk, talk and figure out what would be acceptable for, for this.
Do you think if, I just, as you're saying, that sounds like a great idea and all that, you know, if you say you did say a buddy buddy system where you had to have a buddy go, do you think that might deter some people from using it?
It would be harder, like, especially for me, 'cause, I mean, it's scheduled, but I would just have to find, uh.
I mean, the, the one problem we're having here is.
I mean, I'd have to find more people to join, let's see.
Yeah, it may, it may work in the opposite direction, it may be a plus.
Yeah, it may be a plus, yeah.
I know, that's why I asked.
But and even if periodically somebody had to, would come from the town hall and come in and check, if there was quite a few cars, and people were in the gym, and you wanted to check, well, maybe we should have an ID card, not just the key to get in, but we would have our ID card that would, that we could just go, yep, I'm a member, and.
But then it, it's, then it's getting them back when they, you know what I mean, so when they don't renew, so let's say, so January first, you know, we've got.
Oh, I see.
Date the card, just date the card.
Right.
Oh, it's a dating card, yeah, that, yeah, there's lots of ways, I think, we could work through some of these.
Yeah, no, there's certainly, it's just we need the manpower.
Yeah, we don't have the manpower at this level, you know, in the town hall to do it, so if, you could get a group together.
You guys can use the town hall, come up, you know, have, you know, ask names, I mean, they use it for other, you know, road associations do the same thing. And see, you know, what we need, we, we need some numbers. We, we gotta, we gotta be able to go to the insurance company with a scenario and town meeting if we get that far.
Right.
Okay, and say, okay, it's, right now it's costing four to, four to six thousand dollars a year. MMA wants it fully supervised, um, what do you think the cost is gonna be for that? Um, repairs, like I said, we could knock off a bunch of these, I'm sure.
Right, right.
You know, like, we, we were talking about the people who are going in there and not. not signed up or sneaking in. You could probably get away with authorized personnel only, okay, 'cause you're not authorized if you haven't signed up.
Well, and I think that if you did enough random sporadic checks, that'll stop.
It would.
Maybe at this point, nobody's checking, so.
But at the end of the day, um, there, there's stuff there that, you know, if we're gonna go to town meeting, if we can get that far with this, we have to have some sort of plan.
Exactly.
And we gotta be able to go to the MMA and say, "Okay, we're gonna do this."
Right.
"We're gonna try the buddy system, or we're gonna try to supervise it, but we need to know numbers."
Right.
So, um, if you guys wanna do that, it'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, not that-
Let others-
Not that we could put it on this, but we're gonna have a special town meeting coming out as well. Um, you know, we had to decide whether we wanna put it on that or wait till the, wait till the real one, so.
That's for the town, the dam, right?
That's for the dam, yeah.
The dam, dam.
Dam, dam?
The dam, dam.
For the dam.
Okay, I'm gonna let others talk for, thank you.
So, anyway, uh, you know, so the sooner we could get some information, the better, and, you know, like I say, we gotta get it, gotta get the information, get it to MMA, see if they're acceptable on it.
I got this back.
Then we have to put it to, uh-
I'm just marking people interested versus who's actually signed up.
Then we have to put it to the vote for the town to come up with the funding, so, or if there's a way of doing it where we don't need a lot of funding, so.
Okay.
Yep, once again, state your name and-
Mine is kind of a question, Wendy Violet.
Thank you.
Um, more of a question and a statement. I will not use it with a buddy. I'm the crazy person that goes at like three-thirty in the morning. Uh, don't think anybody wants to volunteer with me, and I won't use it if we have to staff it, and it's like eight-thirty to five. I work. How many people would not be able to accommodate that daytime, "Hey, we have to hire somebody"? I mean, I'm, I'm out. That's, that's the deal breaker for me.
That's one of the best things about it, is you could come twenty-four seven.
Right, so we wouldn't, the, the question is, if we don't staff it, if we don't staff it, will the insurance company say a buddy system? It's gonna have to be one or the other. You're either gonna have to agree to take a buddy, or it's gonna be staffed. I mean, we're hoping that we can get away with a buddy system and not staff it.
But how many, my thing is, along with the numbers, how many people are going to drop out if that's a determination? I, I would have to.
Yeah, I was, I was really, I was, I was hoping when we started talking about this, uh, a couple of months ago, that, you know, and it got on Facebook, and it blew right up, and I was expecting to see thirty, forty people jump right on board, and so, and we got two.
Yeah.
And so it was kinda, kinda frustrating at that point, uh, but we have a good turnout tonight, and, uh, maybe, um, if some of you guys can, you guys-
Oh, is anybody's up at three-thirty?
Maybe get on a little committee there and come up with some ideas, but we, we, we do have this, we have to go buy, and-
Oh, and I understand that. I'm just saying, for numbers purposes, we probably should have to figure out how many people would be able to do that.
Walk away if they, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, you know, there's, there's so many, you know, like the, the payment, how, do you sign up for the full year? Do you do, still let do the quarterly? There's so much here we gotta figure out, because the problem is, it, it's failing right now. Financially, it's failing. And with, especially without the town funds coming in, um-
I'm one of the people, I'd pay more, because I use the gym, but-
I'm sure you do.
And we appreciate that.
But the problem is, is, um, you know, the heating bills and everything else, and then, you know, you gotta pay for the name tags and all that's other stuff. There's a cost to it, and if it's not running itself financially, surviving, and we can't come in because town says we can't, town meeting said we're not allowed to, so we're, we're kinda strapped right now, you know, handcuffed to this, you know, we gotta, we gotta get this right.
Yep. Just be aware that, just keep that in, in mind, 'cause for me, that's a, that's the deal breaker.
If you had to have a buddy, you would walk away?
If I had to have a buddy. I mean, unless somebody else wants to get up at three-thirty.
Yeah, and there might, there might be another way. I don't know what it is, but, you know,
we gotta have the ideas to ask, and that's why you guys are here. You know, I mean, give us a list of ideas, and we'll go back to the insurance company and ask them.
Yep.
Hi, Randy Esten. Um, is the gym open only to Acton residents?
Acton and Chapley.
Acton, okay. Could it be open to other surrounding towns, which might bring more people in?
Yeah, I mean, anything's possible. We, we opened it up to Chapley to try to get a few more people, if possible. We did open it up to, what, any of the sheriffs?
Law enforcement, fire, any, any first responders in any town.
Yeah, and it hasn't, you know, it hasn't brought an influx of a lot, so.
'Cause I don't really see too much advertising for it in either the papers.
Well, and because we can't, we can't spend taxes, we can't pay, spend tax on the money.
Basically.
I mean, Facebook's, that's why I said, I thought Facebook, when I saw it on there, I mean, it was, there was some long, long, things, people had some pretty good ideas. Well, you know, a lot, a lot of thoughts, and, you know, Facebook's pretty good advertisement, you know, and, uh, and we got two people out of it.
And honestly, sir, just to, for those of you that aren't involved in everyday politics and aren't involved in the town on a daily basis, I mean, so my salary obviously is covered by the, the voters, you know, it's covered by the, the taxpayers in Acton. If I use my time to post something about the gym, that is considered misuse to some members of this town, because it's, it's using taxpayer money, my salary, to fund the gym that had a zero number on it. So, that's what, you gotta keep that in mind. There are people that, that have brought that to the attention.
We've also had people that-
So, I, I can't do anything, you know, I, even my, you know, meetings with people regarding the gym, it's, it's gotta be minimal, because it's taxpayer money.
And you gotta also understand that, that we've, we've had some individuals confront me about the idea that, you know, you've got, um, taxpayers who are just making their tax bill, that are, would be invested money into that, that can't afford the memberships. So, you know, that, you know, that, that's kind of a, a bummer.
Yeah.
And you're looking at that aspect of it. So, we, it's gotta, right now, be nice if it could fund itself without having to go to the taxpayer, um, because we don't know. You, you, if you do your plan, you wanna do your plan to make it self-fund, because we don't wanna see what happened at the last town meeting, and, and hope that that happens, 'cause then everything will be for nothing.
Right.
If that did happen.
Yeah.
Or the gym people just have to come to town meeting.
If it came down to having to have to hire somebody, would it be feasible to hire two part-time people? Then the people that can't come during the day, and can only come late at night, could come certain days with a part-time person that would work those certain days?
I think that, right now, if you get a, put a committee together, throw those ideas around, you know, um, you know, have that committee put some ideas on paper, something that we can submit to MMA, something that we can put a warrant together for, 'cause we still have to keep it open.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to keep it open, but to keep it open, we have to have some sort of plan.
Yeah.
'Cause I do agree that there should be somebody there. If there was a guy using weights-
Oh, yeah.
And he hasn't got a spotter.
Right.
He's not, he's, he's not, he should be smart enough to have a spotter, but, you know.
And that's exactly what they're saying.
Yeah.
And another, another part of the, the budget process for it could possibly be, um, fund, you know, from the town, the maintenance of the building, heating of the, you know, the, keeping the building itself going. So, you've got, you've got heat, you've got lights-
But they pretty much did that, and they shut it down last year, I should tell you.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, that's why I'm saying, if they're gonna do it, they wanna be able to self-fund this.
Yeah, hopefully you could self-fund it, but it's still a town building.
Yeah.
It's just something to keep in mind. It's a town building. We still need to maintain the building itself as a town building, and heat it if it's gonna stay open, so, you know, and then the memberships, that money could go into, um, you know, helping the person be there off time, you know, the, the, the person to work there, if possible, or, you know, maintenance of the equipment. Just, I'm just throwing out ideas, different ways of breaking down something, so, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, my name is Conrad. I was the one that was there when-
I wasn't gonna say that, Conrad.
I was the one that got there by myself, uh, when the insurance guy came in. I'm using it, no. No, but, but, uh, I-
I wasn't gonna call him out, poor Conrad.
I, I, I'm the one that joined for just December, um, and I'm sorta glad I did, 'cause I'm the one that goes for the treadmills and the ellipticals, and when I got done last year, there was one treadmill that-
Out of order.
Was out of order, and I joined again this year, I'm with the town guy, and it's still out of order. Now, when my wife and I go, we, we're not the type that are he-men or he-women or whatever, and, and it's, it's sort of tough to join for a year, when if another treadmill goes-
Well, what I'm saying is, the problem is, is it, it's hard to have any money in the account that you can, you can depend on to fix that stuff.
Right, right.
When you, you're only paying by the quarter at a time, when if you say, okay, we've got, uh, fifty members, full-time members, that's gonna be such and such, then you could budget.
Right.
But right now, it's, right now, it's just maintaining itself barely.
Barely.
Right.
And, and is no money there for maintenance, because-
We don't know what's coming.
There's no money.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's going into heating the place.
Right, right. You know, I, I don't know what the solution is to it, but like, you know, if it needs, like, people said, a full-time employee or like a volunteer, I might as well buy a treadmill and just do it in my house, but I did that before, and it becomes a coat rack.
Exactly, yeah.
So, to have a building to go to, like, I put my coat on the one that's out of order, and, no, but I, I just want to, you know.
Great, thanks.
Hi there. My name's Karen Galately, and I'm actually the one that started the Facebook post, um, about the gym. I don't have a lot of expectations based on what you have said, especially Jennifer, thank you for all that information. I mean, I'm hopeful, but I don't, really don't expect anything, especially the liability. I had no idea about that. Um, I do have a question, though. When the town voted, do you have a record, like, how many people were there? How many were for, how many were against? Was it by one vote? Was it ten people?
No, no, no. So, it's up to the, so one, at town meeting, it's up to the moderator to decide if an actual count, if he wants a count to happen, if it's not, you know, 'cause it's just a show of hands. So, if it's, um, I mean, you can watch the tape, they're, they're filmed. I mean, town meeting probably averages forty to sixty people, if we're lucky.
Okay.
So, and I, and it, we did not count that one, meaning that the moderator by "I" could show that the article passed with the recommendation of the warrant of finance overwhelmingly.
The only time they'd, they'd count if it was a close, close vote.
If you can't call it by "I", so.
Right. And my only other comment is, again, when I first started the, uh, the Facebook post, it was like, "Hey, did you even know there was a gym?", and there were so many people that didn't even know. So, I don't know, when you mentioned a special town meeting, maybe if, again, on the Facebook page, "Hey, they're having a special meeting", you, you know, if you're interested in the gym, keep it open, to keep it open.
We haven't decided on it.
No, understood. No, understood. I said, "If", um, if there was, then maybe there would be a lot more interest. Again, I can't address the liability piece of it, um, but bringing in all that money and those people that do have keys and try to get them made, I wish you wouldn't do that, uh, so we could get some more money in, so.
And again, I mean, it's not, I mean, there, you know, I mean, I've, I've seen a lot of insurance lists, and there are, you know, some of these, there is some, like I said, there is some leeway on some of them, but, you know, you guys gotta decide as a group, do you wanna find, you know, because sometimes too many, you know, more is less, you wanna find six solid people that wanna say, "You know what? Let's set this meeting date, let's sit down, let's try to go through these and, and, you know, figure out how many of them are really issues. Let's see what we can brainstorm to, to come up with a counteroffer to the insurance company to see if they'll even accept it." I mean, we're talking about the buddy system, we don't know if that would even fly, but you got a better chance of a buddy system than you do staffing it, because we're not gonna be able to staff it. But a buddy system might be a happy medium for them, but you gotta decide amongst yourselves if you wanna try that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for starting the Facebook post. My name's Nancy Maloney, and I do use the gym. I'm not sure if I'm paid up right now, Jennifer.
Um, we'll talk.
A little disclosure.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna start calling people out. Hopefully you guys, everybody in this room-
Okay, I'll make sure I am.
Everybody in this room doesn't think they're signed up, 'cause some of you aren't.
I'll make sure I am. I know we can't solve this tonight, but I just have a couple of questions. Since it's not funded by the town, can, could we go out and get bids from other insurance companies, or do we have to stay with the one that-
We have to stay with our insurance.
Town owns the building, so.
Okay.
How much is the insurance that it would afford? How much is that?
Well, the insurance, I mean, it's town-wide. It's not a do-, it's not a, you know, we'd have to get a breakdown for each building.
To make it comply with the insurance company's request.
Compliance, not the dollar amount.
Right. I, I understand that, yeah.
The dollar amount, though, isn't it, when you're saying, how much is, is, would be appropriated or a portion to the gym?
You wanna come up after Nancy, and I'll, I think I can address that.
Um, a question, have, if there was an overall plan on how to fix all of these things, do you know what the timeline, um, what the, the insurance company would allow for a timeline to get it done?
Well, um, I got another, one of those, "What's the status, Jennifer?" emails, I think, day before yesterday. Um, we're gonna have to start, we, I mean, I, we have to answer her at least, and, and be able to say that, you know, because she hasn't given us the time, because it's been a while.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're-
We would definitely have to show a good faith effort.
We're weeks, if not, less than a month, I would say.
Some of these are years over, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Like I say, we've been running under the radar with this, 'cause frankly, me as a selectman, didn't wanna shut it down. I'd like to stretch it out as long as we could, and we have tried.
Yep.
Um, you know, to try to make it fly, but-
Kind of stuck a rock and a hard place.
Getting, getting back to the cameras that were approved earlier, I'm wondering if a camera in the gym would be supervision, and if there was an emergency call button that went to the fire station?
I've, I've thought about the cameras in there, and-
That puts a lot of responsibility on her.
Well, what's the, what's the fine line between, um, you know, security and moni- and monitoring and invasion of privacy? You know, it's, uh-
There's no way I get on.
Once again, that's another, yeah, and Jennifer doesn't have time to sit there and watch, you know, who's running on the treadmill.
Yep.
So, yeah, yeah, and three o'clock in the morning, too, so.
Yeah, and have-
I would have as a record, come eight o'clock-
Yeah, 'cause if you're-
Of what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Um, have we considered outsourcing to, like, a Planet Fitness, just to do an overall, what you need to do?
Nope, I haven't thought about that.
You mean, as far as what they would recommend we do?
Yeah, and like, maybe a quarterly inspection?
Yeah, we, there's definitely a couple of companies. I mean, there's, there is, we have a company that could fix that treadmill. We have a company that could come and inspect it. Um, we just, I mean, at this point, we don't have the funds, so, you know, I mean, I, you know, and I'm just kinda thinking out loud. So, if we had, let's just say that all of our December people, and you know who you are, it's quite a few of you, re-signed up through June thirtieth, and we could establish what we expected heating oil to be for the re-signed up through June 30th, and we could establish what we expected heat and oil to be for the remainder of the next six, you know, at least three months, and we would budget high because we can't take that chance.
That's the easiest number to come up with.
Right, well, I mean, would there be something left to be able to maybe do something with, assuming everybody re-signed up? Because...
It's unknown right now.
Right. So, but again, I mean, I can't, I can't encourage you enough to find six solid people to sit down and just start going through this line, this line by line.
Yeah.
And at least we'd have something to say to the insurance company. They may come back and say it's not enough. They may come back and say, you know what, that's a good start. You haven't had any issues, you haven't had any claims, you know, we'll meet you in the middle. There's two.
Thanks.
Peter makes three.
I think that's a great idea.
Oh, Mr. Knapp makes four.
Bob Knapp, sorry. We could get some people to go to the gym and we could sit down at a meeting someplace and go through these and see what we come up with and come up with a plan to try and salvage it. The other thing I was thinking is what if the town, what if everybody in the town was a member and the, and we had, didn't have any gym?
Well, you could, you could do that.
Yeah.
And now, that would probably be the fairest thing, but the problem is, you got to fund it.
Well, yeah, but you're, how much are you talking about if you say it's $10,000 a year?
But $10,000, what was it, what did the finance committee cut last year out of it?
The voters.
Well, the finance committee made the recommendation.
It was between four and $6,000, I think.
It used to be like $46,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say five thousand.
They cut $46,5,000 last year. So to turn around and say, okay, we're gonna get $10,000, they could do the same thing.
But they, but I think what he's saying is, you know, so you put that number in there, we don't charge any memberships, and it's open to every taxpayer in the town.
Much more of an incentive for people to put it on their tax bill rather than to have to...
The only problem I think we'd see with that is, is you still have to do the liability every...
Oh yeah, we definitely, yeah.
Still to do all your paperwork.
Right.
And you might be better off going to that room, because it...
How much, just as a curiosity, how much, if you were to spend $10,000 as a number, what does that increase your tax bill by for the...
Oh, that's pennies.
Yeah.
Not even a penny.
I think, isn't that something you could put through and say, there's no more membership?
The biggest thing is, is this, is get a plan, get a number, something we could put on a warrant, one article, and, you know, that will meet these guidelines with the insurance company.
And then make a presentation.
Well, you could do that, you know, that would, and I don't know if that's something that we'd have to put through all the committees or not, you know, the finance committee and stuff like that. We'd probably have to do that.
Anything with a warrant.
But the biggest thing is, is get it so we can put something on a warrant, something that we can present to the other committees, and then get the town meeting and get it voted on. Because last year, obviously, there wasn't enough people there that, and when the amendment was made, it was cut. There wasn't hardly any discussion, and it was gone. And now that's why we're in the situation we're in.
Yeah, and I think the first thing to do is to go through this list and make sure that we can appease the insurance company.
Yeah, that's number one.
Because it doesn't do any good to make a plan and open it up to everybody if we're not gonna go through it.
But if he makes a plan...
Yep, and they agree to it.
We may have to at some point here make some sort of decision when we're gonna shut this down because of this reason.
Yep, we're keeping an eye on it.
To, but until then, you know, if we can, you guys can start a plan, you can give that, you know, look at that avenue. You can still look at the avenue you guys are working now, whether or not that works. Get a couple of options. Because at the end of the day, when you get the town meeting, you know, even if we have to have two separate warrants, let the voters choose on which one, you know, because it may be a bunch of people in town, because you remember right now, what's that, forty-two people using it?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. You know, that's not a majority in town, and whether or not they're not using it because maybe the, don't work out or they just don't, can't afford it or whatever.
They don't know, yeah, they can't afford it.
If it's part of their taxes, it may be different, and then we close down the family.
A lot of people don't know about it still.
Or we keep, or we keep it open to other towns in charge.
And then the only problem with that, or the first thing that jumps in my mind, is these occupancy postings that are all around now from our fire chief. That building is only allowed to have so many people in it once, so the minute we open it up to the entire town, somebody's got to be in charge of counting heads.
Right.
So, and then at that point, you're gonna have to have a full-time person.
Well, all right, I'm just, my job is to look at the other side.
Okay.
So I think better yet, you know, get on that six-person committee there and shoot some ideas.
On the second timer, does anyone first time?
Anyone else?
I do have a question.
Yep.
Come right up.
Well, no, she's already asked.
She's following the rules, even.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is David.
David.
I do, I want, David Bubba, so I'm Gail's husband. I want to remain optimistic, but I do, you know, worst-case scenario, if the decision is to close it because we can't meet these requirements, what happens to all the equipment?
The equipment belongs to the fire department.
All right.
Would revert back to the fire department.
So the equipment would go there?
Yep.
Now, you guys have room for all that equipment?
Well, it's up to them.
I've already spoken to, yeah, I've already spoken to the fire chief. He's aware.
Some of the, some of the equipment, like a treadmill that doesn't work, would probably get hitched. And, yeah, whatever equipment...
Whatever is going to go there.
Would go back to the, it would revert back to the fire department to...
All right.
He's aware and has space. He and I have had that conversation.
Yep.
Okay.
So, and unfortunately, then he would essentially come up with a set of rules that would appease the insurance company, and he'd be responsible for only fire and rescue members, right.
All right, good enough. Thanks.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Do you need my name again?
No.
Okay. My only other question would be, and again, I'm not expecting a lot, but if there is enough interest, now that people in the town realize that there's a gym and, you know, putting all these hurdles that we have to go through, we donated a lot of money to different organizations, and a lot of them are obviously very well worth it, but there's a lot of money, I have the whole list here, I'm not going to go over. If there is enough interest and if it goes to a town vote, could some of that money go towards funding the gym instead of maybe being donated to other towns for things?
A portion of it.
So past practice has been to be a social service on, you're talking about the social services, visiting nurse, lifeline, those kinds of places?
All those things, yeah.
Gilead, those kinds of, yeah. So past practice, and the board of selectmen have the right to overturn this, but past practice has been that they had to be a nonprofit organization and actually filed their...
Like a 501(c)(3).
It's still different than the library. The library is the same idea. That's a private thing. The town funds it.
But they're, they're a 501(c)(3).
But it was funded before. It was always funded before, but it was cut last year. That's why we're in the situation we're in. So I'll repeat myself again. I says, like I said before, you know, you, you gotta come up with a plan where you can self-fund yourself just in a worst-case scenario. And you could still, you know, put something on a warrant, you know, to fund it if, if so, but you got to make sure you got a backup plan, because you can, they can make the amendment again and they zero you out again.
Yep.
Okay, so basically, listening to everything, again, I'm hopeful that this thing is, sounds like it's probably a done deal.
I don't think so.
I don't think entirely, no.
Good. Well, I'm glad you said that.
I think from our side, it's not, you know, if, the only thing that we may have to do is we may have to close it down for a short period.
Depends on how quickly you can get your people together, a group, and, and address the highest risk first, and...
How long, you know, how long can we put the insurance company off before they come and say, you're done?
That's the worst-case scenario. We may have to shut it down at some point just until we can appease, get this all in order.
All right, so if I could just address everybody, that those of you that, not all of you may be on Facebook. If you are, there's WhatsApp Act in Maine, plus you are probably here because you've heard of it. So maybe if we could do a post and try to figure out what we want to do with this list, get together. Unfortunately, I work in Massachusetts. I left work early with permission. Weekends is better for me, but I'm willing to go and sit with people and go over the list, and anyone else that's interested, maybe we could set something up via that webpage.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else at all? Going once, going twice? I was gonna give you the opportunity, Gail.
Gail Bovier, I might as well say it. I've got a blank sheet of paper here. We can put emails on it. We can reach out that way, communicate that way, and start something up.
And decide who's running it, and I love you all, but please, one contact for me.
Yes, it'll follow the same, the same rules and regs that we have for all, all boards and committees.
We just don't want four different people trying to contact and having a bunch of different emails, and it gets confusing.
Yeah, so if you get, you know, four, or five, or six people together, come up with a chairman of your committee, and that'll be the contact, that person will be the contact for the town, so. Thank you, yeah.
Steve Gerini, and I don't really know why I'm up here, because I'm certainly not physically fit, and I obviously don't use the gym.
And sign up, Steve.
The important thing here is, and they've been saying it, it's been being said around here, number one, there were about fifty people at the annual meeting that voted this out. We've got almost thirty people here, and if you went to the annual meeting, you'd outvote that.
This group right here would outvote it, because there's only fifty there.
Absolutely. But what you need to do is you need to have a plan when you go there. And you need to have a plan to get it on the warrant committee, because a warrant is not going to prove something just out of the air. So when they're saying get six people together or eight people together, that's the way it works in this town. We've done all kinds of committee things, where we've had an-hoc committees that sit down, they plan, they write it out, they make it look good, they go through the procedure in the town, it gets on the warrant, then it goes to a town meeting, and when you get to the town meeting, you show up. You get any other people that maybe don't even go to the gym, but they live in Acton, you get them to go to the meeting with you, and it passes.
Yep.
That's how you think it passes.
That's right.
And that's the way it goes.
Yeah.
So that's what you really need to do. Get a committee together, organize it, go through the plan, get it all set up, and then go through the process and get to that annual meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't feel like you got to get everyone off. The rest of the meeting's gonna be quick. I'm just saying. I don't want the dog to jump up in the middle. Oh, Peter, I knew you would.
I'm Peter Baxter. Okay, this initially looks like the patient's dead.
It's not.
No.
Yeah, that's what this says.
We're trying to give a CPR, so...
This, the patient's dead. However, we're not going to accept that, okay? I want to thank everybody here who came this evening. I thought I'd get about five people. I'm shocked as many people showed up. That's great, okay? The reality is that a lot of these things can be resolved with money. You're not going to get a full-time person working there. That's a joke. Forget it. It's not going to happen. We're not the one of frigging buddy systems. That's a joke.
Talk into the mic there, Peter, if you would.
We're not going to get a buddy system. That's a joke.
Actually speak to us, because this is the direction. Thanks.
But we can get around that.
Yep.
Right? Anytime Fitness, everybody here has heard that name. There's no trainers in there. It's a camera system. They do not have people there at three in the morning, I guarantee you. Okay? So we can get around some of this stuff, which is good. I'm going to propose that I'm going to continue on this WhatsApp Act, and it seems to be a really good format. I'm surprised at how many people actually respond to that. I'm not a Facebook back. Cameron came up and said, do that, I did that, and holy mackerel. Maybe I'll run for mayor, huh? It's unbelievable. So I'm going to use that as a central point to get our communication together. And I think the idea of coming up with a plan is necessary, and I think the gentleman who was just up here didn't realize that's how it works in Acton, so we have enough people here to get what we want done. We all show up, okay? So that's what we have to do.
You can remember, Sarah, though, when you get the plan and get all the people, they can counter-plan that.
Well, I just heard you said we get a plan guaranteed, right?
I'm just giving you a worst case, but...
Couple of things for people to consider, please, and I'll put this in the postings. Jennifer, you've used numbers four to $6,000 to keep this place going. Guys, that's about for the heat cost.
Well, that's heat and electricity.
Everything else is done by volunteers. There's about two people doing it, okay? Six grand will not keep that place open. People came in and they wanted to know why the equipment isn't clean or whatever, you know, or it doesn't run. It's because there's no money. Okay, just to, just to get the door changed, and that place took two years. We had to get volunteers, a couple of guys that came in to put the damn door, a door, right? Last winter, there was, the winter before last, there was no dang door. They even closed it. You used to go up every morning and have to put a piece of rope in there to keep it closed. It was a joke. So in order to do this correctly, six grand's not the number.
Right.
Not even, no. An annual figure here without a body in there as an employee is $10,000. That's what you're going to be looking at. It's got to be, just to keep it going.
With or without employee?
No, employees, no, no, no employee. Ten grand.
I'd agree with that.
You're a businessman. Ten grand.
No, 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 I thought...
No, nobody's gonna...
I misspoke.
The insurance company's not going to accept volunteers. They're going to want somebody who was qualified, et cetera, et cetera. We got to get around that, so that Anytime Fitness is the model I'm going to go with, okay? That's the only way you can go with it. This isn't Gold's Gym. This isn't any of these other gyms. It's a little-town gym. What they're concerned about is safety, obviously, but this, right now, that's a death knell unless we get rid of this, because the insurance company says, no, no, you know, this place is, it's dangerous, is what they're going to tell you. So that's what we'll do. So I'm done. I'm gonna, I'll use the face WhatsApp Act as the, as the, well, now, here's the question. Everybody really wants the answer. I heard a month from you. You said about a month, three weeks.
Yeah, it's just...
It's not six months.
Don't know.
Maybe we have enough money to keep the place, if everybody pays up, we can heat it maybe through the end of January unless it gets really cold.
If everybody paid up in their Decembers, you'd probably heat it the remainder of the winter.
Right.
It's not so much that side of it. We're worried about it's the insurance company.
No, I know. When you started this, I was very, as soon as you said that, I looked at this list, and said, that was a very accurate intro. As a matter of fact, we could have almost ended this meeting after that. I said, this, this is insane. But it's required because it hasn't been addressed, how many years?
But every department in the town's had their list of things that they've had to do. And unfortunately, this one has a lot longer list than most.
There's a lot of things in this list that we can address, who's that lady right here? We can address with just some labor.
Right.
But there's a lot of things, there's many things in this that could be very expensive. If they insist upon it, it's not going to happen.
Well, you know, it's like the certifying the equipment and stuff. I mean, you're gonna have someone come and do it. I'm sure you got the pace. I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, and there's somebody that can do that.
Right, right.
Workout center, he would come up.
So I'm going to finish my little speech here with something, and I put in WhatsApp Act, and I want everybody to kind of key in on this, because this is what I think might be a solution to this problem. I don't know how many people in this town, even if we all get in there, we're actually gonna want to pay for this. Your numbers were very accurate, Jennifer. We got, what, maybe fifty people, tops? If you stretch it.
I have forty-two, but only twenty...
Do the math, it's easy. How many people live in this town?
Well, it's 2,200 registered voters.
2,200 registered voters, fifty people. Do the math.
But even out of the fifty-two, remember, only twenty, I mean, twenty of those were, twenty-two of those were paying.
It's such a small minority, I can't see this town really going to approve much money into this. So here's what I want to consider, or what everybody here to think about, because I don't know how to go about this. Somebody in this room has either done what I'm going to recommend or knows somebody who's done this. Well, this really should have, and I put this on Facebook, I'll do it again. This place can be best suited financially if we have a government grant. We need the feds to come in here and finance this thing. That's what you need. Rural community geriatric, da-da-da-da, all that jazz. Come up with something that they'll, they'll write a check for. That's the, the most logical way, I think, to get this going.
Well, the government grant's great and all that, and we're, but listen, the reason why we're in this situation is because of a grant.
In a way, yes.
Because we started out, we started out with a grant.
The original equipment came from a grant.
I got that. I know that.
And what happened was, so what ended up happening was, the fire department, that was for the fire department. They got a grant and they got it all paid for. It was for them. They weren't using it. So instead of tossing all the stuff, they decided, well, okay, let's, let's let the town have the people doing it.
Right.
And so the grant, but the problem with the grant is, okay, you get it all up and going again, at some point, the town will still have to fund it, at some point.
Create another grant.
And hope you get it.
Right. So what? We're hoping this place will stay open.
Well, I know you do. I'm just being honest.
But I understand that. Grants are not forever.
They're not guaranteed.
No, we're applying for grants right now for other stuff there, and we've been refused on, we haven't got any yet, I don't believe. But, uh, but the grants are what got us in this situation.
Exactly, right, so, okay. So, okay, look for my stuff on our WhatsApp Act, and again, thank you, everybody. I did, I'm shocked as many people showed up, really. I thought it'd be a handful, and I was going to take my coat, just wipe out.
I had a pretty good idea there was going to be a good turnout tonight, so I, and I appreciate it as well. Yeah. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, so at some point, you folks can talk amongst yourselves, figure out who you're going to talk to. Gail might be a good contact. We do have a little bit more of a...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, before you get running off here, we do have a little more of our meeting to go through, so if you're going to discuss anything else on this, please just run outside, so.
Meeting's still going on.
We still have a meeting going on here, so folks, if you want to go outside and discuss this, that'd be great, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, goodbye. Thank you.
What's up, Conrad?
Hey, it's all good.
Yep, we'll talk later. We got to get back on meeting.
The camera's rolling.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, cleaning bids.
Okay, so, we have a few.
Okay, good.
So just so you know, so currently, we are paying $60 a week for cleaning.
Yes.
So, that's one, that's two, three. So those are bids, so we ran it that, so our assistant clerk was also doing cleaning on off-time, so... We ran it, they have to be, it was an independent contractor with liability insurance and exemption from workers' comp. So those are the prices. There's a sign on the door that says, you can't, per the fire chief.
Yeah.
Don't close it.
Yep.
Sorry, he made me put the sign on the door. So they have to be open.
Yeah.
I guess we'll just speak up louder a little.
I would have made him sit through the meeting, I mean...
I apologize, Jen. Can you repeat what you were just talking about?
So we're paying $60 a week for cleaning of the town hall right now. Since we lost our assistant, we haven't been cleaned. Staff is kind of kicking in, so you've got three bids there, but all independent contractors with workers' compensation. So those are a couple of prices, and then we had a different one that is interested in doing it as a town employee.
Really? So, that's, that's, I just figured that, I just divided it by four.
Yeah.
So it's pretty close. Yeah, so there's one here that wants to do it as an employee at seventy-five.
How do you do that as an employee? You have to pay tax and everything, all that.
Yeah, so you would withdraw out of that individual as a regular employee.
Yeah, with no benefits or anything, so strictly...
So these two that you have there, sorry, those two are the lowest. The other ones we can't afford.
Right, yeah, that one's sixty-eight and change. This one's seventy-five. Yeah, this one's three hundred.
This is, this is a week. That, what's this one right here?
Yeah, that one ain't happening.
Yeah.
Well, it's three hundred a week, so...
And this one's what, seventy-five?
This one's seventy-five.
A week, right?
A week.
Okay. That one's...
So you basically have those two. What's that one there?
This one here is a hundred and thirty a week.
Yeah.
This is from Pine Brook Cleaning Services.
Let's put that one over here with this one. We'll hold those. So we got these two here. What's your, what's your thoughts? What's your...
So, I mean, one of them has cleaned the town hall before, just because she's kind of, she's a town employee, but she's involved, and she just kind... Yeah, and she just did it once, and she did a phenomenal job in the bathrooms. I still remember it. The other one cleans for the town of Chapeli and has been for a few months now and does a fabulous job over there. So I'm not picking between the two.
I, I got a recommendation.
What would that be?
I, I, I would prefer going with this one right here for some reason, is she kind of works for the town anyway. She's right here.
She's local.
Local.
Well, they're both actual residents.
Okay. Would this one here be a town employee, or this is straight?
That one would be an independent contractor. She has her liability insurance. So the other one is going to be covered under the town insurance, it becomes a life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't always...
But we were paying the prior one as an, as an employee, so...
Right, right, it doesn't really boil, doesn't always boil down to dollars either.
I know, I mean, they're, they would both do a phenomenal job.
Within seven dollars of each other, six dollars of each other, so...
She's done it before here, correct?
Well, she did it the one time, just once, but...
So she's interested in doing it?
They're both interested.
Yeah.
Can I look at the numbers one more time?
I just took that monthly number and divided it by four. One we're going to pay taxes on.
Mm-hmm.
One we're not.
Workers' comp, one you're going to pay workers' comp and, like, so scary.
You're going to pay six point two-five percent more, plus the workers' comp.
You're not deducting it out of that.
No.
You're actually adding on to that, so...
Right, so the seventy-five goes up.
What ends up happening is, when you, you do your FICA, you double in part of, I mean, it's not big money, you're only talking dollars, you know, so, I mean, probably at the end of the day...
But she'd only clear the sixty, I mean, she probably would clear sixty-five, right?
Yeah.
Right.
But, but that's not it, it's still, even if she only brought home sixty-five out of that, you have additional money added on to the seventy-five, because you're going to double parts of your, you know, your employment tax, so, so, you know, because when you hire a person for, say, thirty dollars an hour, it costs you thirty-six.
Right.
You know, so if you were saying seventy-five, you're, you're pretty much saying seventy-five dollars an hour, you're, you're adding, it's going to be more than the seventy-five dollars an hour, so, and in just a bit, it's, there's a bigger difference in seven dollars an hour than...
Right.
So I, I guess I'd probably change my mind on that, and I, myself, I, I'm a, I'm pro, I'm pro contract, put things out to subcontract, I'm trying, I myself would rather get rid of town employees and add more on.
Good to know.
Me neither, in other departments, it's different.
Stop shoveling.
It, it is something that...
Bring the crowd back in.
For me to say that would be a good idea to put another person on for that little amount for what we're doing, would go against what I would eventually, you know, I would like to discuss later on down the road, so...
And, and I mean, if you have two equal people that are just as wonderful as the other, one's lower than the other, and that's the best interest of the town.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, and myself, I, the other one, I know the other one, I think she'd do a great job, it's just the math, math doesn't add up.
They would both do, both do an excellent job.
Yeah, I'll have to go with the math, I guess, as much, I don't know the second person, so, I, maybe I do, but I, it doesn't ring a bell, so, yeah, I guess I'll have to go to dollars and cents, because you say both are going to do a good job.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, Cheryl Kunnattes in Chapeli, she's been over there for, what, three, four months now?
Yeah.
They haven't had any, see, and, and Acton, I'm having the cleaning done on a Monday or Thursday that one of us are here, because I don't do codes and keys and all that for the cleaning people, I just, I'm not comfortable with that. Chapeli, right off the bat, gave codes and keys, and she does it on the weekend, they've had absolutely no problems with her at all. I mean, they're both, you know, but the same with this one, I mean, she's...
And I think when we advertise it, do we advertise it out as a subcontract?
Yes, yes, we did, and that was a conversation that her and I had, because she didn't have the insurance, and I said, "You can put it on there, they may or may not accept it," so...
Yeah.
Yeah, really, for that kind of money, for her to go get the insurance, unless she's got a bunch, it wouldn't be worth it.
Well, whereas that one does it regularly.
Right, okay.
Okay, I'm going to change my, change my opinion, I guess I'm going to make a motion that we accept, what's it, Lois Jackson?
Louise.
Louise Jackson, at six, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents a week, at seventy-five dollars a month.
She'll bill monthly, if that's okay with you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, I mean, as long as that's what, Michelle, yeah, as our new cleaning person.
I'll second it. Yeah, we hire Louise Jackson as a cleaning, her cleaning service, and it's two seventy-five a month, so, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Yeah, I did, thanks. There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Just believe it, we'll get it.
Did you not pick it up? I get it, I get it right now. There you go.
Thanks, Ed.
Sorry. Okay, freedom of information request.
Alright, so we have two.
Yep.
The first one, I'd like to know how much road salt the town has purchased in the last five years, please include the dollar amount as well as the tonnage purchased each year. I'd like to know how much winter salt for road treatment was purchased in the last five years, please include the dollar amount as well as the tonnage purchased each year. I'd, I'd like a list of roads maintained by the town. I missed that part, you didn't see that? Please, I was going to say, so, this one was twelve, twelve, fourteen, we sent twelve, sixteen today, the road history for five years, I did not, however, put the list of roads the town maintains in that email.
I'd like to make a comment on that, to the person, and...
It's public.
Yeah, public, Mr. Donnie, he's made it public that he wants to get rid of salt and roads and all that, and, but with the information that's given right there, the numbers, you know, they vary, they're varying from year to year because of winter, so, I guess you can take whatever you want out of those numbers and do what you want to do with it, but, I mean, what it is.
I need to, I need to email him.
State does, the state's trying to get us, stop us from using sand and go to salt, not stop using salt, so, you've got to be kind of, kind of productive.
Okay.
Second one, I'm asking for the total assessment for one fifty-four lot two, according to the tax maps of the property, the assessment is zero, I did, however, find that map one fifty-three, lot fifty-four has rights to this property, as stated within the Declaration of Protective and Restrictions of Wentworth Pines, Tattle Street, is assessed water access in the amount of nine thousand dollars, no other property is subject on tax assessment for the above property has any shown.
We, we looked it up.
So we'll turn it over to our licensed assessor, who's going to answer that, freedom of information?
Yeah.
That's the easiest way, I mean, we outsourced to him, they're assessors, I mean, not that your answer or my answer's not going to be correct, but he's a licensed assessor, let him answer it.
Yep, yep.
But you're right, it's common ground, that's what David was going to say.
And all freedom, all free of...
Even on the thing, it didn't show any assessment on it, it was just showing a building, a garage, if we can't figure where the nine thousand, that's why we have to ship it off to where we are.
And all freedom of, freedom of information requests should go to the town administrator, these were sent directly to the, to the Board of Selectmen?
Some of the selectmen.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe last week, I had questions.
That might have been David.
Yeah.
Questions, but you said, you know, freedom of information, obviously, different.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, we took care of F, public comment, anyone for the public? Going once? Going once, we'll stop there, come right up. Well, take your time.
My name is Angela DiOrio, and I am the secretary for the Lakeside Drive Road Association, and I'm just here this evening to clarify a public comment that was made at the December eleventh meeting here. The, our Lakeside Road Association has fifty members, and it's a very supportive group of members there, and we probably have maybe two, three members that forget to pay their annual dues, but they eventually all do, and not one member has ever been denied the ability